Welcome to the Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one Plan Commission and Commission for Citizen Involvement Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Iris, would you please call the roll?
Buchanan.
Here.
Heap.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Pepe.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Rigby.
Here.
Stewart is excused.
Thank you. We have quorum. I would like to introduce our newest Plan Commissioner, Mr. Miles Rigby. Miles, welcome to the Plan Commission. Is there any opening remarks that you'd like to say, introduction?
Just that I'm happy to be here and, you know, look forward to getting some good work done.
Thank you. Yeah, we we welcome you and appreciate the service you provide to the community. Thank you. Next on the agenda is council update. I don't believe we have a council update tonight. So we'll move on to agenda item number four. This is public comment. This is regarding issues not on the agenda. Iris, is there anyone that wishes to make a public comment? We have no one who wishes to make a public comment tonight. So we'll move to item number five, the Commission for Citizen Involvement, general updates. We did receive one update tonight, and that is the Bryant Neighborhood Association's annual meeting will be held Thursday, December second, two thousand and twenty-one, from six-thirty P M. to eight-thirty P M. It's a Zoom meeting. To receive the meeting registration link, the Bryant Neighborhood Association asks folks to R S V P at W W W dot Bryant L O dot org. Again, that's W W W dot Bryant L O dot org, and you can receive the information there. On the agenda is Lake Ridge Middle School traffic update. There'll be guest speakers to talk about that. There'll be Bryant Connect on launch. The Bryant Neighborhood Association was recently awarded almost six thousand dollars by the City of Lake Oswego to enhance their intra-neighborhood communications capability, important in times of need. Says think earthquake, power outage, ice storm, wildfire. Program details and opportunities to participate. Committee updates, followed by the election of the Bryant Neighborhood Association Board of Directors for twenty and twenty-two. So it looks like a packed evening for the Bryant Neighborhood Association, and I encourage everyone to attend if they can. That was it for the Commission for Citizen Involvement general updates. Next on the agenda are the minutes from October twenty-fourth and November eighth. These are not ready tonight, and so we'll defer those to a future meeting. And then item number, we'll move on to item number seven on the agenda. This is findings, conclusions, and order. This is the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments for eighteen zero one one Stafford Road, L U twenty-one dash zero zero three nine. Public comments are not accepted. On November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Plan Commission made a preliminary recommendation that the city council deny the proposed amendments and return with draft findings, conclusions, and order. The staff coordinator is Paul Espy, Associate Planner. Director Siegel, are there any comments that staff would like to make?
No comments from staff, other than just to report back that the draft findings are intended to reflect your tentative decision from the prior meeting and before your consideration.
Thank you, Director Siegel. Commissioner, are there any comments on the draft findings? Clarifications? I only had two as I was looking at them. On page two, around lines forty-three to forty-eight, it talks about the comments that were received about Atherton Drive, and it talks about emergency vehicles potentially being impacted. So in that discussion, I do remember that. And I'm not sure how much this limits the scope of discussion when it goes to council, but the one thing I was recalling was there was discussion about the other services, just the fire services and the adequacy of like the fire hydrants, the ability to fight fires and offer that service. So I wouldn't have an issue as long as it doesn't preclude that, because I remember that being something that was key to the discussion, especially pertinent to, you know, when we're discussing, can the city provide the transition from rural to urban services? Director Siegel.
I think there's a general concern or sentiment that's implicit in the findings that relates to the the commission's findings on adequacy of public infrastructure and ability to serve. And, you know, those are the criteria that the council will consider and will need to make findings on whether to approve or deny.
Sure.
So I don't know that that, you know, that granular level of detail would necessarily be would be necessary, or the absence of it would preclude that, but I defer to Attorney Boone on that.
No, I agree. The parties can, or anybody can raise issues at the public hearing before the council. And that'll be, and that's also in your minutes.
All right, thank you. I had a similar comment on the, on page seven of the, like lines thirteen to seventeen, where it talks about the sanitary sewer, and I knew we got into some discussion about the Belleterra lift station and connection to that. But again, I would assume that would be the same comment, that there's a general concern that's raised there. It doesn't, there's not a need required to go into the specific details. It makes us, those can be discussed at council. It's within scope. So with that, I didn't have any issues. Commissioners, any other concerns or issues? Is there a motion to approve the findings and conclusions in order as recommended the council for denial of the application?
I make a motion that we move to approve the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Just a second.
Well, just for the, just to be clear, Commissioner Leek, you voted in opposition to these findings, and you're moving to approve them. So you're changing your vote?
No. But it's already noted, right?
Well, this is, this is not a ministerial adoption, so if you don't agree with these findings, you should not move to approve them.
Well, then I recant them.
So it would be Commissioners Heap, Pepe, and Phillips who voted in favor of the tentative decision which resulted in these findings. So ordinarily, we would expect a motion to come from one of you three.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings as.
Just a second. I'll make a second to approve. Iris, would you please call the roll?
Buchanan.
You abstained in the previous.
Heap. Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Leek.
No.
Pepe.
Yes.
Phillips.
I have a question. May I ask a question at this stage? I'm fine with what these are. Is the answer yes, if I agree with this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm yes.
Rigby.
Abstain.
Stewart is excused, so passes.
Thank you. The motion is approved to accept the findings and conclusions in order. Thank you. Thank you for everybody participating in the discussion. Thank you to staff for all the hard work and analysis that you did and coming back with the findings and conclusions. Thanks to everyone. We look forward to the hearing that goes to council. So now we'll move on to the next agenda item. This is a work session, item eight dot one, the Community Development Code Annual Amendments, Work Session Number Two, L U twenty-one dash zero zero five seven. Public comments are accepted. The Commission will receive an update on proposed amendments to the Community Development Code and provide additional input prior to conducting a public hearing. The staff coordinator is Evan Franstedt, Senior Planner. Evan, would you like to give us an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Chair Heap and members of the Commission. So for tonight, I guess we start with the process. So this phase, we decided after the first work session to move forward with the ten items. They're on the same track as of right now. So the next step is to schedule the P C hearing. And Director Siegel and I were talking about appropriate time to have the public hearing would be January twenty-fourth. That would give us enough time to send out the notice in December. So it sounds like, yes, it'll be January twenty-fourth, if that's okay for everybody else. And on to the first of the ten items. So these are the maintenance items. So we have five maintenance items, and we have five policy items that we talked about at the first work session. So the first one is the building design standards for commercial, industrial, and multi-family. This is to codify practice by staff and established by D R C that these discretionary standards that are not the clear objective options, but discretionary only apply to similar buildings, similar type buildings that are subject to the standards. So you're comparing, you're looking at buildings designed to be complementary in appearance to adjacent structures. So that's on other sites of good design that would be subject to the standard if newly constructed or a building style design required requirement in an adjacent design district is the possible code amendment, as I put in my memo. I don't know if you want to have discussion on this, or if we should move on to the next item.
Sure, we can open discussion. Commissioners, any comments that wish to make? Maybe just one question. I was wondering, when we talk about multi-family and we talk about a similar type of buildings, I just want to confirm, I think we may have discussed this once before, but as we're working through House Bill two thousand and one, part of what we learned was the recommendation coming from the Code Advisory Committee that there would be maybe some design standards that would be changing, but those would be separate and wouldn't impact maybe the work that's being done here, correct?
I believe that's correct. Yeah, these are discretionary standards, and so we'll be developing clear and objective standards for middle housing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on to the second item. So this is to delete code, so to comply with House Bill. So it's removing obsolete one hundred and eighty-day extension that's referencing the code that isn't allowed by state code anyway. So this just removes section I of the code, as I put in my bold and strike. Any questions about that? Okay, I'll keep moving along here. All right, so the third one is setbacks from access lane. So the code right now isn't very clear on how you apply the code says an access lane shall be located no closer than five feet to an existing dwelling. Common practice for planning staff has been, we measure this from the access easement boundary. So this would add that language at the end of the sentence. So the code would now state the access lane shall be located no closer than five feet to any existing dwellings measured from the access easement boundary. Any questions for that? No? Okay, so on to number four. So this is to fix an inadvertent conflict in the code. So this is for minor variance setbacks, specifically for to preserve a tree. So right now, it just says minor variance of twenty percent or less from yard setback. And then it lists, if you preserve a tree, you can go up to fifty percent. So this makes it clear. So you have, we'll add some language in there that has twenty percent or less reduction from yard setbacks or Lake Oswego setbacks. And then down below, make it a separate section, so there's two different sections. So you have twenty percent, and then one has fifty percent. So it's clear that you're not applying twenty and fifty conflicting, basically. I hope that made sense. Okay.
Trying to save trees. That's what it's all about.
Yeah. All right, so on to number five, definition of family. So this is to comply with House Bill twenty-five eighty-three, which goes into effect January first next year. I know we had a little discussion. You asked me to do some research on why this, how the House Bill came into being and what was the purpose of it. There really wasn't much out there, honestly. It's a pretty simple bill that was, as I said before, it's one sentence. It says, "Section one and maximum occupancy may not be established or enforced by any local government as defined in O R S one ninety-seven point zero one five for any residential dwelling unit as defined in O R S ninety point one hundred if the restriction is based on familial or nonfamilial relationships among any occupants." So basically, we need to amend the definition of family to not include any reference to marriage or a number of people. So proposed amendment would be, right now, it's, the definition of family says, "Any individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, legal adoption, or associated by guardianship, conservatorship, or a foster care relationship, or a group of not more than five persons not so related or associated living together in a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping unit." The proposed language would be persons living together in a dwelling unit as a single family housekeeping unit. So it simplifies. It removes any reference to relationships or relations and the number of people. So it's just people living together in a dwelling unit.
One question is, why do we remove the reference to the number of people, then? It doesn't seem like that has anything to do with relationships or anything like that. It's just the number of people, which.
The House Bill says nonfamilial relationships among any occupants. So the number is kind of a relationship. I think this proposed amendment would just simplify, it would just be any persons.
I had some, a thought. It seems to me that this approach doesn't necessarily by itself bring the code into compliance. I mean, you're redefining what a family or familial is, but that doesn't change the fact that, you know, family ties as such, you know, however you define them, are still being referenced in the codes. And, you know, the House Bill doesn't reference marriage or blood relationships or anything like that. It's talking about familial relationships, whatever they are.
That's true. I mean, there's also, I guess, the practicality of enforcing this definition and having conversations with our code enforcement officer. Right now, it's very difficult to enforce a five person, or if they're blood related, or if they're married or anything like that, that doesn't really, it's not something that is easy to enforce. This would create a definition that is straightforward and would be easy to enforce if we had to. So there's more to just then complying with the House Bill itself. It's also, how do we apply it?
Commissioner Phillips?
I just want to be on the, I just want to be on the record that I'm not going to debate what a family is, okay? Whatever you want for code, fine with me. Modern family, anything, for this purpose. But getting into rings and weddings and all that, I'm not, I'm not interested in that.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the purpose of tonight is not to decide the issue, of course. The question is, is do you need more information? Should there be alternative drafting? Are there options that should be considered at a public hearing? This is to sort of key it up for the public hearing.
Sure, thank you, Attorney Boone. Commissioners, any questions along the lines of requesting further information or more understanding? Commissioner Leek?
I guess I'm not clear. The current code has a limit on the number of people who could occupy a residence?
Well, barely. And the reason I say that, I mean, the current code says a group of not more than five persons not so related by the prior stuff or associated, living together. And so the current code, we take five unrelated people, I have to use my hands on five unrelated people, and from that, any person could have related blood, family, et cetera, coming off of that. So each one of those five has as many people who are, who meet that definition. So it's not five people. We don't have a max occupancy limit in a strict sense. We say five people and their progeny, if I can use the term, which could, of course.
And that's in addition to any number of people who are related by blood, marriage, and what have you, yeah, in addition.
If somebody has a wife and eight kids, that's, that's part of the group of one, okay? And the next one might have five kids. Well, okay, but, you know, so. So there's no real absolute max, but the, on the current code, there has to be some family tree back to one of the five.
Okay. Wow, okay, thank you.
Also, it seems to me that the only way to comply with this, you know, state mandate here is to remove the reference to those relationships in the occupancy limits itself. I mean, changing the definition of family, it doesn't really impact, you know, whether or not you're making restrictions based on, you know, as it says familial or nonfamilial relationships. There's still familial relationships. You've just, you've changed what familial relationships are, right?
Yeah, maybe I'm not quite following. I mean, the proposed text for consideration of public hearing would remove the relationships test.
But it's still calling them, it's still calling them family.
Well, yes, and I think that's for the purpose we have. Otherwise, you'd end up with a massive code amendment, because we have single-family dwellings. You know, I mean, family is used in a type of, in the type of dwelling. And so this removes the familial relationship test to them, to who can be in them. It makes it, there's still required to be a single housekeeping unit, okay? People still need to operate as a single housekeeping unit. But I think the family is left in because of the definitional tie to other types of structures.
You know, there's single family and multiple family, and it's really a term of, a term of art, but it's also a term in law in our code. And, you know, another approach would be to go through the whole, to go through the whole code and do a global, you know, search and replace to change family to like a household or something else, but we're not proposing that for just administrative ease and just general practice. It's, you know, the term family, single family or multiple family is commonly used and understood by the profession and by the general public, I think. So that's, that's the suggested approach. If there's other information or alternatives that you'd like us to bring back, we're happy to do so.
Well, I understand the unpracticality. I, it just looks like, you know, the state made that, that decision in, you know, referencing familial relationships, is what I'm saying.
Oh, the one comment that we had is, I think your clarification, Attorney Boone, was very helpful. From what you described, it sounds like, you know, we don't have any current limits on the number of people today. But it sounds like in the previous code, maybe on the, on the tree depth, there was just a level of two in the tree. But then on the second level, you could go as broad as you wanted, which would affect. So I don't know if that would be useful to basically, you know, state something to like what you described so that the public understands that, and then any feedback the commission would get. Because again, I thought the clarification that he made was very useful, and I don't, I don't think it was apparent that, you know, that was the nature of the change as the commission looked at it originally. So recommendation maybe to capture some of the feedback that we got and share it.
Yes, I'll, I'll add that to the, well, hopefully, the staff report for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. No further questions on that.
Okay, so moving along to the next five items. So the first policy-related item is for Saturday market type uses. So the current code permits Saturday mark type uses, sales from eight A M. to four P M. on Saturdays and one P M. to five on Sundays. The Parks Department is requesting that they, we can expand the hours on Sunday to allow an earlier start time of eleven A M. And they are here. We have Jamie and Emily from Parks and Rec to answer any questions and have a discussion with you about, about the request. Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jamie.
Hi, I'm Emily.
Thank you so much for taking the time to consider this, this evening.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, happy to be here, yes.
Can I turn your microphones on, please?
Yes, it's on. I'm probably not close enough to it, though. Is that better? All right.
I'm not sure, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Or would you like to share kind of any overview from a Parks and Rec perspective?
Sure. I know Evan did a great job of putting this information together for all of you. But we hosted a pilot Lake Grove Farmers Market last year, starting in the spring, in the months of March and April, kind of the silver lining of COVID. We didn't have our normal indoor events, so we had a new opportunity to do some more outdoors. And one of the things that we found through our research, and we'd been looking at doing a Lake Grove Market for several years, was that there were several restrictions in place on farmers' markets in general, on not only which zones they could take place in, but the times they could take place. And so when we did our pilot season, we found that we stuck to the code, the one P M. to five P M. time period. We wanted something that could complement the existing downtown, Lake Oswego Farmers Market, which runs from eight-thirty to one-thirty on Saturdays, something that with our staff team, we could run consecutively. And did the one to five, but what we found was that the numbers of in attendance dropped significantly as the afternoon hours went on, especially around that three-thirty, four o'clock mark. And we are looking to change the code to allow an earlier start time, something that has been indicated through our surveys with vendors, through neighborhoods, businesses, all of those pieces. So there's some background, yeah.
Thank you. One question is, I think you explained, based on surveys and what you've seen, that the attendance started falling off in the afternoon, I believe, on the Sundays. And so, you know, expanding it to be earlier with an eleven A M. start would be very helpful.
Yes.
But then why, what's the kind of rationale for expanding it to five P M.?
We don't, five P M. is the existing code, so we're okay with shifting, just increasing that hour to the earlier start time. You know, we just looked at just having the opportunity to expand the earlier hours. We wouldn't be hosting it that whole time period. We'd be looking at likely eleven A M. to three P M. or twelve P M. to four P M.
So there's really no change in the end, staying the same?
Nope, the key is the earlier to start time, yeah.
That helps.
Chair, Heap, one question that I have for the Park staff is, does this time account for the time that's required to set up and take down the market? Is that something that we're planning? And maybe that's a question for Evan as well, just to make sure you're covered, provided that, you know, the amendment passes, you're covered for the hours that you would need.
Yes, so the hours of the market when we ran the pilot season were the one to five. So that did not include the load-in and load-out time, because commerce doesn't start until right at that one P M. mark. So this would allow eleven A M. start time with commerce starting, so load-in could start earlier, closer to nine-thirty or so.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like we consider, you know, the use is occurring when the market is open. It's not, doesn't begin when the market is beginning to be set up or taken down. Thanks.
Correct.
Commissioner Phillips?
I just have a couple of curiosity questions, more than anything. One is, I live in the Windward, and the market's great, and we like it a lot, but.
She's our market manager right now.
Historically, historically, my experience has been when a competitor comes into the neighborhood, somebody has a blowback. But I didn't read anything in here that anybody from the Millennium area or this area was having a problem with you putting in one at the Lake Grove.
No, we were really excited about the feedback that we received. It's been something that the community has indicated a desire for, for a lot of years, a push for a Lake Grove-style market. And we were looking to do something that was a little different than our existing downtown market, that had a different energy, a different feel. So I think this really provided that, and we were really pleased with the results. As you noted, even the businesses in the neighborhood, nobody indicated a negative impact. Everybody indicated either a neutral or a positive impact from the event, which we couldn't have asked for better. We worked really hard to ensure that, you know, the events have a positive impact on commerce, but as little of impact on the neighborhoods and the local businesses as possible, so.
The second curiosity question I had, since I probably will never have an opportunity to have experts on these things again in front of me. So do the vendors have the opportunity? So do the vendors have the opportunity, like, is it set they have to stay from 11:00 to 5:00? Or can they, can the candle vendor leave at 3:00 if they want? Or do they have to stay? The honey vendor has to stay, or what's the deal with that?
Yeah, so we do require the vendors to stay for the full time that the market is open. We don't allow anyone to leave early unless, of course, there's an emergency or something comes up.
I think this gets me back to, and I, I'm perfectly fine with whatever you want to do, okay? But that gets me back to the, what our chairman said is, you know, the surveys, every component, I didn't see anybody that talked about wanting to be there past 3:00 PM.
True, including us.
So please don't, please, you know, please consider maybe 11:00 to 3:00 on Sunday is a better time than 11:00 to 5:00. Because if those vendors have to sit there, eventually those vendors won't sign up to be there.
And we're flexible in that regard. If you, you'd like us to look at, you know, changing the hours to 11:00 to 3:00, that would be fine, too. Or even 12:00 to 4:00.
Well, this would establish the maximum hours of your operation. You, of course, decide within that scope.
Correct, correct.
Great job, great opportunity, on all four.
Thank you.
And I just, Terry, just to follow on to that question about the relationship to the businesses in the area, as part of the process for a legislative amendment, you know, the city notifies the affected neighborhood associations. And in this case, that includes the Lake Grove Business Association, which is in that area. And so, and they're already aware of this, but they'll, you know, if they decide to take a stance or support it or comment on it, they'll have an opportunity to do so in the public hearing. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that we do outreach and notify the, you know, affected neighborhood associations and the business association.
Thank you, Director Sequel.
I was going to say, Director Sequel, do you want me to elaborate a little more on the outreach that we did? Would that be helpful?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So I would say we did a lot of outreach throughout the whole process, not only prior to the actual event starting, but also as a conclusion with the surveys. So we worked directly with the Lake Grove Business Association, as you mentioned, in the chamber both. And then we did some direct outreach to about 25 of the neighboring Hallmark Drive businesses in order to get started on this project. We also worked directly with both the Waluga and Lake Grove Neighborhood Associations. And then, of course, did a lot of additional outreach through customers, all of our city outlets, whether it's Hello, Hello, the Lowdown, all of the Lake Oswego review, a lot of additional research on there. And then also, as you saw in our conclusion survey with our vendors particularly, too.
Thank you. Place your Pepe.
So maybe just my ignorance on this and lack of understanding, with the load-in, load-out times, is there, is it one hour before? Is it one hour after you have to be out? What is that impact going to be on the neighborhood surrounding there on a Sunday if we adjust this?
Sure, we have an existing vendor handbook that details all of that. And for this particular market, the load-in time for the 1:00 was 11:00 AM. So it's traditionally about two hours. And that's predominantly because it allows us, all of our, if you're looking at the produce vendors that come in with a big box truck, it gives them ample time to unload. And then we also kind of stagger our vendors so that we don't, we block as little of traffic as possible. So it allows us ample time to, for them to set up and to stagger that accordingly. As far as the close time, when we had the 5:00, we were out.
Probably in 45 minutes.
I would say by 6:00 PM at the latest. So close goes a lot faster because everyone's ready to go home.
So then realistically, the impact is going to start around 9:00 AM?
Correct, yep.
On a Sunday, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Again, to clarify, I just don't know that much about the, it says a Sunday market and not a Saturday market, but there's Saturday market rules that get applied to the Sunday market.
We have a vendor handbook that applies to both. They're tweaked differently depending on which location that you're looking at, but some general, whether it's health code, guidance, insurance requirements, that type of thing that apply to all of our vendors. So some of it is uniform, and then some of it is specific to the location.
But this is a Sunday market?
Correct.
Are there duplications from the people who are at the Saturday market who will also come to the Sunday market?
Yes, we did have some duplication.
Okay. And this is literally right in the area, in the Mercado Grove?
No, it's located on Hallmark Drive between Mercantile and Collins.
Mercantile and what?
Mercantile and Collins Way.
Okay, okay.
So it's on the road itself.
Well, of course, that's not required in the code. It just specifies in commercial, industrial, and PNF zones, it could be allowed. So it's, that is where it is now.
And if we move it up so it can start earlier, will you then not go as late? Is that your intention?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Rigby?
I know last year was interesting in many ways, but I, myself, went to kind of the pilot project a few times, and I noticed sometimes that there, well, I suppose part of it was the time of year or two, but there, there were not very many produce vendors, and the foot traffic wasn't terribly high. So I'm wondering what kind of vendor demand you've seen. Is there a high level of, you know, diverse interest from vendors, considering that there's, you know, another market the day before?
Yes, we've actually been really fortunate in that regard. We've had support from our vendors to continue the program. The one thing that I'll note that we're looking at in our research right now is we're actually looking at doing a fall season rather than spring. As I mentioned, the nice part, the silver lining, I would say, of COVID was that we didn't have our normal spring programming. So we had an opportunity we wouldn't otherwise normally have, where all of our vendors have indicated, and you see this, you know, as Oregonians, that produce is very seasonal, and there's a lot more produce in the fall season. So we're actually looking at doing this fall 2022, so.
Wonderful. Just one other thing, you know, I see that the hours for the Saturday market are 8:30 to 1:30. Is the shift here just in, because of, you know, churchgoers shifting, you know, when there's demand?
I would say it's our suspicion that the reason the code was the time that it is is based on church times historically. And we definitely think there is an earlier crowd. There are people now that go to masses at different times, even on weekends, Saturdays, that type of thing. So there's definitely been an interest in an earlier hour.
Did, did you, I mean, in the surveys, it looked like you didn't do any, didn't question people as to whether they would prefer something before 11:00, something more like the Saturday. Did you hear anything about that or against that?
No, but one nice thing, we didn't do anything earlier than that because we knew that would be a larger code change, so we didn't look at that. And as I mentioned before, we wanted to really have this market have a separate identity than the one in the downtown Lake Oswego. And we've received a lot of positive feedback, comments more than anything, that there were people that enjoyed having the opportunity to attend at those later hours, that, like that 11:00 AMs to 3:00 PM key start time, rather than having to be there quite as early in the morning.
Don't have to get up at the crack of dawn.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? I was going to say one that I think I'd be interested in seeing as it comes to the public hearing would just be, you know, this would be mostly based on the neighborhood impact, but I know the commissions heard from the neighborhood in the past, and one of the concerns has always been traffic. And as there was new development going in there, they talked about kind of the levels of service being right on the edge. So, you know, if they don't have any concerns with traffic, I think that would be good to hear. But if they do have concerns based on the past history and how this comes into it, I think getting more information about that would be very useful.
Yes, and the one comment I'll make on that, too, is as part of hosting any new event where you're going to have an impact on the streets, you have to apply for a special event permit, which goes through all of our city departments for their input. And the first thing we did before we even applied for that permit was to meet with the representatives from each of those departments, including traffic engineering and also our traffic team from the police department. And I think because of that Sunday date, and, you know, the elementary schools closed at that time, they weren't concerned about the impact. The number of sports in particular on Sundays are less, too. So you're not competing as much with the elementary school there.
Thank you, I think to hear that from the neighborhood association would be very useful.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, just given the amount of concern they raised, I think some of the things, the points that you're mentioning make sense. But again, to hear that from the neighborhood association and get that testimony back to the commissioner would be extremely valuable.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't think we have any other comments, so thank you.
Actually, I would like to note that they have a map on their website for this that shows the free parking, so there's like five different parking lots that people can park at and walk to the event. So if you're concerned about traffic, I mean, that is one way that it is alleviated.
Yep. We worked really hard, we had some partnerships with some local businesses that allowed us to park there in addition to the elementary school, so.
I think those are great points, and so I'd just recommend, yeah, including that in the presentation that comes forward in the public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so on the second policy item, which is boathouse maximum size and setbacks. So the current code limits boathouses to 560 square feet. This would reduce that to 500 square feet, which would be moved to align with the Lake Core private standards and the recently adopted flood management overlay amendments. This also includes clarification in the code that says boathouses are allowed to be within the side and rear setback, it's in the lake setback, which is, it's in a different section of the code, this puts it in the lake setback section, so it's easy to read and is clear for people who don't have the code memorized like, like we do. Any questions about that? Because I should know, I stated this last time, this requires a measure 56 notice. So this should be, this is the one item on, we're talking about tonight, that limits development, then the code, further limits development that the code does currently.
So every lakefront property owner will receive a notice of this proposed amendment at least 20 days, but I think not more than 40 days before the hearing, it's a requirement. And again, as Planner Pransit said, the Lake Corporation already limits the size of these boathouses to 500 square feet, so it shouldn't feel like an encumbrance.
Thank you, you have no comments or questions?
Okay, on to number three. So this is back to the building design standards for commercial, industrial, multifamily. As we talked about this last time, you asked if I could reach out to previous applicants. And I sent, sent out an emails to the, you know, the projects that this design standards apply to in the last two or three years. Not surprisingly, there wasn't really that many, because a lot of the commercial development we see involves an overlay, where these standards don't apply. So I define development that was not an overlay that had to comply with this. I received some feedback, as I put in my memo. General themes of their comments were that on multi-building sites, a new building should integrate with existing buildings, even if those buildings are not complementary to adjacent buildings of good design. And the second one was subjective nature, open nature of the standards can lead to varying review of projects depending on the decision-makers. So they're talking about, you know, you just don't really know, depending on the staff planner and how DRC perceives the project, these standards can be applied differently in different situations, was their, their comment, basically. And let's see, third one was the requirement to design buildings to be complementary to adjacent buildings of good design in regards to roof lines is challenging and could result in unintended consequences or impacts. But as you can see, they all agree that if there's a new building on a multi-building site, that they should be required to integrate with those existing buildings compared to being complementary to adjacent buildings of good design. So instead of having to comply with part one and two, this code, this code amendment would require those buildings on multi-building sites to only integrate with existing buildings on site, so as not having conflicting standards. So this puts an exception in the code, is what I have in my memo. Any questions or thoughts?
Commissioners, any questions or thoughts? Oh, just maybe a question to you, Planner Epstein. So based on the letter, I did, you know, read that they thought that, you know, some of the code wasn't as specific as they had liked, and it was very left to subjective. So are we indeed, do we feel like we're indeed able to potentially address the concerns through this item, that, you know, the specifications that we can add will, you know, go directly at some of the subjectivity concerns that they have?
Well, I don't think these proposed amendments will address those concerns.
Okay.
I think they would take a different process, a different, probably its own path outside this annual code amendments, to really dig into those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
This just really clarifies the code and makes it clear that you don't have to be complementary to adjacent buildings on different sites and integrate with existing buildings if, if the existing buildings aren't complementary to those other buildings anyway. So it doesn't, you know, it's like a roundabout where it's like, well, you can't meet all of that, so how do you, this would clarify that you really only have to integrate with existing buildings on site.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item number four is for online neighborhood meetings. This is something that we heard, positive feedback during COVID times, is that neighborhood meetings, a lot of people liked the option of attending online compared to going to, you know, the library or some public house or something like that. This allows, if approved by the Chair of Recognized Neighborhood Association, that the neighborhood meetings can be held in an online meeting platform. So it gives the applicant the option, either they can do it in person or they can do it online via Zoom or some other platform.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Just, as you've written it, the applicant initiates it, but then the chair has to approve it.
That's right.
So you could end up with situations where one neighborhood association says, great, and another one says, no.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, it does give the neighborhood the...
That's what the text says, so unless you want to consider alternative texts in your public hearing.
Commissioner Lee?
Does it also mean that once they decide to do it in one path, that's always the path they're going to take? They can change back to a in-person meeting if they find that Zoom is not effective?
I don't think so, I think they can do either one. But they need to send out a notice 20 days in advance, and they need to be clear on what platform, which, which way they're going to do it.
Okay, so every year they have to send out a notice?
Well, every neighborhood meeting requires a notice 20 days in advance.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is per development application, or per prospective development application. So the same neighborhood could say, well, we're actually not available for online meeting this time, we prefer to have it in person only, and that would be the direction for that, for that application to that meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe the question I would have with this one would be, just based on the, a little bit based on the commission attending the council meeting for House Bill 2001, there was feedback that was given at the meeting by, I think, the 50-plus advisory committee on concerns they had with that. With this feed, would we want any information like that to be fed into this, to, you know, go into maybe some details about, you know, rules for the online meeting? So, you know, things like, you know, when people are muted, when people are shown, those type of things. Would it be useful to, you know, get that feedback and make sure that, you know, if we're going to online meetings, we're trying to maybe look ahead and look at maybe potential concerns where people are thinking they're not able to participate fully in it? And again, maybe I'm a little bit biased because I'm going back to the council meeting where we had one member, you know, expressing concern with kind of our hybrid meeting that we had.
Well, so, I mean, the first thing I would say is that, so these are neighborhood meetings where afterwards, the development, the applicant's going to submit a development application. And a lot of times that's going to go to a public hearing, but, so the neighborhood...
Excuse me, can I ask you to speak closer to your microphone? Between masks and people getting away from the microphones, I can't understand what people are saying.
Okay, can you hear me now?
All of us, all of us.
That's where you can hear.
Is that, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this neighborhood meeting, it's just the first step in the public process. The next step is submit the development application. The next step is submit the development application where we send out, you know, notice to surrounding property owners in the neighborhood. They can submit written comments, they can come to the public hearing. There's a lot of options for them to participate after the neighborhood meeting. So I guess if someone feels like they weren't able to participate in the neighborhood meeting correctly, they would still be able to voice their opinion during the actual development application. This is really just to help the applicant know potential concerns and address them before they submit their development application.
Yeah, I think, if I may, I think Chair raises a really good point that not everyone is equally adept at hosting or running these online meetings. And so if we're talking about neighborhood associations, you know, hosting a meeting, some are going to be more skillful at that than others. And, you know, if you're a participant or you're a resident from the neighborhood who's just popping in and you want to attend this neighborhood meeting, it's not a city meeting, but it's something the developers require to conduct prior to submitting their application. You know, I think that the city could help provide some guidance, you know, to the neighborhood associations when they're hosting, or to applicants when they're hosting these meetings. Of course, we're not regulating that because it's between the developer or the prospective applicant and the neighborhood, but we could, you know, provide some best practices, if you will, around that. I think that for the public meetings, whether it's a public meeting, you know, with the city council or a public hearing, I think it's about sort of managing expectations in terms of what, if you appear before the planning commissioner or the DRC and you're appearing virtually, what should you expect? You know, you will only be able to speak or perhaps be seen when you're recognized by the Chair, and it's your turn to speak. And I think that may have been part of the tension there. On the other hand, if it's more of a, you know, a work session and there's a, you know, a conversation that's occurring among the participants and the planning commissioner, the council, and I think that requires a different format and a different way to participate. And it may be that, you know, having everyone online in Zoom, even as they're sitting at the dais, might be more conducive to everyone being heard and seen. So I think there's some, you know, there's some different challenges, but I think there are different, there are some opportunities that we haven't had in the past with the virtual or the hybrid meetings as well. So anyway, I just, I didn't want to go too deep into this, but I think as you're talking about amending the code to, you know, explicitly allow the virtual meetings for neighborhood contact meetings or for the city public hearings, we should keep in mind that there's, you know, there's some, on some level, we need to regulate this. But I think there's also some administrative kind of support and guidance that the city can provide to make it more effective.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pepe?
So before I ask my question, may, can you help me understand, are we on number four or number five?
Four.
We're on number four. We've come.
Because I'm hearing the whole lot of number five coming into number four and talk about a development meeting, but number four, that's just on a neighborhood association meeting getting together, correct?
Yeah.
Just neighborhood meeting that developers with the neighborhood and.
Yeah, these are not just, these are not neighborhood association meetings that are just neighborhood association, you know, general membership or executive board. These are meetings that the neighborhood and a prospective developer, development applicant conduct for the development, ahead of the development application. These are, this is a very specific type of meeting that neighborhoods conduct, and the developers are required to participate in prior to submitting an application.
I guess I need to change my context. I don't see where any of that language is in number four, though.
Well, it's part of the development code, and this is for development. So the code requires it for development. So it's part of an application, the applicant has to go to the neighborhood association, and they send out notice to surrounding property owners, and they present a proposal of the development to the neighborhood association.
Okay.
This is an excerpt from the code. It's not showing the whole.
So I would, I would agree with what Director Siegel just said, and that is, I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily get in, I understand that the situation that happened at that previous meeting, but I don't think we need to get in and start policing and mandating that it be conducted in a certain form or fashion for these meetings or the other meetings. But I do think it would be a great option or opportunity for the city to again strengthen that tie with the neighborhood associations, to help them with, and I hate this phrase, best practices that you all have learned, both in meetings within the city itself, but also in meetings that you have conducted with others within your industries, and help them out. Outside of that, I don't think we need to get into policing and mandating that they be run in a certain form or fashion.
And just to, just to kick the horse on this thing, this is not being run by the neighborhood association. This meeting is not being run by the neighborhood association. It's being run by the developer, which could be, you know, a construction company that bought the property, or it could be mom and pop, because they've got a proposal. So that's the challenge, is how the planning department help everybody who's going to be submitting a development proposal, so it's a training challenge.
Well, and the good news is that applicants have been doing this for over a year now. And, you know, it was, it was an emergency, and we had to put some procedures in place to help everyone be successful with this. And so far, it's actually worked fairly well. We haven't received any big complaints that I know of.
Yeah, but very positive feedback, yeah.
Great.
I think it would be useful, though, to, and I understand it's the neighborhood meeting that's specific to development when it's occurring to be held by a builder, but, and I agree with what Vice Chair Pepe is saying, I don't think we want to police it or whatever, but I think it would be helpful to the community to maybe give some guidelines or something that may exist and get information or collect information about, you know, if we go to online neighborhood meetings, you know, how do you make them the most effective? What are some just suggestions? And it may be if some, there's something else, you know, some other organization out there that has something that we can just point to, that would be great. But, you know, if we allow this, I think, giving some type of feedback to say, you know, these are suggestions or considerations you may want to look at, open that please, I think that would be helpful.
Well, maybe as part of number five we're going to talk about, maybe the city will come up with a best practices of how to hold hearings and or just meetings or, you know, generally best practices we could share with the applicant. Yeah, that would be a good idea to create. So on to number five, segue. All right, so as part of HB 2560, which is going to be effective January 1st, this requires governing bodies, like cities, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technology, technological means, and provide opportunity for members of general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony. If in-person written testimony is allowed, then submission of electronic mail or other electronic means must be allowed so that the governing body is able to consider to submit testimony in a timely manner. So this would require amendment to the development code. So it would need to be amended if the decision is to require written materials to be submitted prior to the meeting. Staff would like to discuss the option of requiring written testimonials and requesting virtual meeting login information. So you have to sign up and submit written materials by noon the day of the hearing. The reason for this is it is difficult for the hearing body to review new materials that are submitted at the hearing. This can often lead to which the applicant or anybody has the right to request a continuance. If we require everyone to submit written materials by noon and sign up, this could allow for more time to review for staff and for the hearing body.
Right, and then the public would still have the opportunity to appear before you or the DRC in person and, you know, request a continuance if they felt they needed more time to review something that.
I agree with that totally, because we've had a couple instances this year where we get testimony and some of us work. And if it's, you know, submitted at noon and we meet at 6:30, and it's lengthy, or there's numerous ones, even that is really short notice to go over and to review, I even think the day before. I mean, if it's that important to people, they should give us the time to review it and absorb it.
Thank you. Commissioner Rigby?
You mentioned also the game of applying login information to that. How is that affected, how does someone, knowing someone will be there or not, you know, within that time period, affect staff or us?
Well, they, how we do it now is, and Iris can correct me if I'm wrong here, but so they send an email to administrative staff to say, okay, I want to participate in tonight's hearing. And that takes time with to send an email back to them with the invite, clarify, help them with any potential issues, there's emails back and forth. It takes some administrative time, especially when you have a large public hearing. If they were, if we, they were not required to do that before noon, and it was, you're leading up to minutes before the hearing, that gets really challenging for staff.
Yeah, I think there's also, and again, this Caleb could add on here, that there's the meeting administration that occurs, you know, on virtually, whether it's Zoom or some other platform, and having people in a, you know, a virtual waiting room, if you will, waiting to be called upon to come into the meeting to testify. And so knowing what that list looks like and who we're going to be calling upon to speak is very important, because they're not here to raise their hand necessarily, or to turn in the blue slip to testify. So, did I capture that, Iris? Is that correct?
Well, if, you know, if a meeting's held in person, you know, say in this room, you know, there's nothing stopping, you know, someone can walk in one minute before. If someone wants to be there, you know, at the time and not just review the minutes or watch the video, as is now the case. So, you know, why would that be different from, you know, getting access a minute before the virtual one?
Because we're not going to review it during the meeting. We're going to see it beforehand. Isn't that the idea?
We're talking about signing up to sit online.
Commissioner, you're referring to the ability to sign up to speak. Is that what you're?
Well, if you don't have the login, then you can't watch either, yes?
Oh, well, you can watch, yes, you can watch without.
Without a login?
Yes, it's available online. You can watch, but you just can't participate. So in some hearings, if you want to continue to participate, if it gets appealed to the council or something like that, you need to be part of the hearing.
I see.
Yeah, you want to, you want to decide if you're going to participate in this hearing, in which case you could sign up, and we're suggesting by noon, to receive a link in order to participate online, or alternatively, show up at the, at the meeting and sign in when you come in the door. And maybe that, I don't know if I want to testify, I'm not ready to commit to that, and you may be watching the meeting online. And if you're, if you have the ability to come down here, you know, some of these hearings go on for hours. I hate to say it, but they do. And we've had people show up because they've watched, they've been watching the proceedings online. I need to show up for that, and they'll come in and sign up to testify. So I think, you know, we try to provide as many options as we can.
And we've also had people drop out of the waiting room because it took so long for them to get their number called up. And I think having, how many people are going to testify online beforehand allows the planning department to know how long the meeting is going to go, or it's going to be in two phases. It gives you an idea of pace.
Just to be clear, we broadcast on YouTube. Anybody can log into YouTube. So we're talking about appearing in the proceeding via Zoom to actually present testimony.
So it's streamed on YouTube?
It's streamed on YouTube and conducted on Zoom.
I see.
But it also is for telephone testimony also, or other electronic or virtual means.
Yes, telephone is also possible, and of course, Zoom has a telephone, you know, we have to manage so many platforms. They could call in on Zoom to be on telephone. They could call the Zoom number, and thus they would then appear, you know, without their photo. But, you know, at least we would know they're there, and they testify at means, rather than having a separate line calling in.
Yeah, I think that identification is more difficult with the virtual signups, because sometimes you'll have someone, like Mr. Bim was saying, they're on the phone and you don't have their name necessarily. Or what was the other scenario that they, we were trying to figure out who is who.
Right, they'll register with one email, but log into another, and not always rename their email when they are on, so that we can't tell who they are.
Right.
You know, and then when you have quasi judicial hearings and we're trying to find out what the stance is ahead of time, so that when we need to call them in a particular order, we know who to call. These are the difficulties that we have when we don't know ahead of time who's going to be participating remotely.
I think of what Mrs. McKelley was saying, she will list the ones who are for a particular issue and then against, or neither for nor against, and they are heard in that order, in that category. So it's not just one is for, one is against, one is neither here nor there. It's very organized.
Vice Chair Pepe?
So kind of wrapping this back up to what we're looking at here. Submitted materials and sign up are due by noon, day of meeting.
That's correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the draft.
Yeah, that's the.
Right. That's what we're discussing right now. Is this on par with similar or maybe a little larger cities than Lake Oswego? On their practice, how do they?
I think Vice Chair, this is going to what I was asking, and that is going to be one of my statements was, you know, I read the amendment or the text behind House Bill 2560, and it just kind of stated briefly what it was. But, you know, again, it's like other examples that the state could provide then, as we were discussing earlier. And, you know, maybe those examples that the states provide is based off other communities' best practices. But I think it seems like a little bit of a danger here by going to that and maybe not, you know, looking at the history of, you know, what's been done, what are these best practices? I was going to mention, one of the things that happened to us is, there was like a network glitch in Lake Oswego, and I think in a planning commission meeting, myself and one of the other commissioners got dropped out. And then what do you do? You know, how do you recover? Do you continue? You know, what do you do for that? So kind of getting an understanding of, you know, how do, what should be the suggestions or practices for how we manage the meetings and information on that? I hope the state could provide some of that, actually.
Yeah, we've been giving that a lot of thought because it's, it is new ground. And we've been, what we're going to include and what we have included, I think, in notices are what the council would be putting out there as a, you know, a disclaimer, essentially. I mean, you're invited to participate remotely or in person, but bear in mind, if you're logging in or participating online, you know, the city's not responsible for any technical, you know, internet connection failure or any other audio or visual glitch. I mean, you're assuming that risk. You can always submit written testimony in addition to, you know, testifying online or in person. But we'll want to make sure that we have that disclaimer out there, because it's not, you know, as you've experienced, it's not foolproof. The other thing is that we would, we would humbly recommend, humbly but strongly recommend that the commissioners be present, you know, in person than actually, you know, here at the dais, so that, one, we don't lose a quorum because of a technical glitch, but also, I think, just decorum and public perception and being here, you know, physically whenever possible is advised. Hopefully that helps.
Finishing up on the thought here, I agree that getting that material as far in advance as possible is much better for us to digest and be prepared for our meetings. And I just want to make sure we're finding that sweet spot. Because I also know, in my experience, in other cities, in other situations, time gets passed, and you're busy and you don't realize, oh, that's right, the meeting's tonight, and it's due at 30 minutes before, or by noon, or 72 hours prior, whatever that, whatever that is. I just want to see and kind of make sure that we're somewhat in line, but also planning for future growth, because Lake Oswego is not getting smaller, right? And there's going to be more demand on staff, and there's going to be more demand on the commissioners and those volunteering in these positions. And so I want to figure out, make sure that when we do this, we find that sweet spot as best we possibly can, so we're not coming back on this next year or two years from now. Does that make sense?
Thank you. We don't have any further questions.
Okay, and that was the last item for tonight. It sounds like we want to move forward with all 10 items, same tract, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
As far as the the public hearing date, did anybody have any objections to January 24th?
No objections, Commissioners.
I think that wraps it up.
Well, maybe one final question, and I thought about asking this when you were going through like the first item on definitions of family. Was again, these than our joint council meeting with House Bill 2001. There was, and I think the decision that or the the direction we're given, the commission was given by council was that we might want to look at the definition of demolition. So I was thinking about that as we're coming in tonight. Is that something that we should, would that be separate from the code amendments? Or would it fit into the code amendments to maybe consider the definition of demolition?
Yeah, I can respond, Chair. That is, I'm sure you can imagine is a pretty significant policy issue or policy change that if the city redefines demolition and it would be for purposes of, you know, development code compliance and the ability, typically where it comes into play is where an existing structure is nonconforming as to setbacks or or some other dimensional requirement. And, you know, having the ability to deconstruct or remove nearly all the structures is about as flexible as, you know, you can be. And that's our current policy. And so I think the suggestion in that middle housing work was to reexamine that and consider a standard that would require that more of the structure be retained before it's or or after which point it'd be considered demolished. And so what, and discussing this with Senior Planner Olson, what we're recommending is that 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 work occur on a parallel track with the middle housing work because I think the two can inform each other. But retain the ability to sever that off and have it follow its own track if it if it's going to require more time or more public engagement or perhaps more focused public input than the middle housing would have because they're, you know, we'd want to consult people in the industry. We want to consult the neighborhood associations. And, you know, we just wouldn't want to have the middle housing work get sidetracked by by that, if you know what I mean. We want to make sure both we're successful with both.
But it also sounds like the recommendation is that it's a fairly meaty policy change. And so it wouldn't be something that would be wrapped up maybe in a set of code amendments. So we'll look at that separately and take the direction from council and staff on, you know, how do we address that?
Thank you.
Okay, I think that was it. Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Can I ask Planning to provide for us what our code language is? And does Planning know what Tuolotins or Beaverton or Portland's demolition codes are so we could look at those as a comparison?
Yeah.
Just getting our homework ahead of times.
Sure, Commissioner Lee, so we'd be more than happy to do that research and compile the examples, I think, in in due course with.
Yeah, at some point.
Yeah, when when I think.
Like you have nothing else to do.
Well, this is, no, it's a good point. This is typically the type of research that we would do in, you know, teeing up this type of an issue for the commission is to look at, you know, what what our surrounding communities are doing, what they, how they define it, how they regulate it, you know, pros and cons of different approaches.
Thank you.
You can expect to receive examples from other jurisdictions, too.
Because I'm sure this is going to be, as you said, a very lengthy, big piece of discussion. And the more we can have some background sooner is better.
Good.
Sorry, we do have other questions. Commissioner Phillips?
I have a couple of educational questions for me. I need, it's probably the only time I'm going to get a chance.
Educational questions, probably the only time I'm going to get a chance. And I'm not trying to back up on any issue here. I'm just, I want to understand a couple of things. So on the boat houses going back to 500 or going to 500 square feet, who is Lake Corp. and why does the city of Lake Oswego care about private standards? I didn't understand that at all.
Sure, so Oswego Lake is managed by the Lake Corporation. They're a private entity, it's a private lake. So they set standards for any development on the lake. So boathouses, they have to get a permit from Lake Corporation. And they have that special private standard of of 500 square feet. So this will align with their private standards.
And we don't typically, I mean, we don't regulatorily care what their standards are. It's just separate. However, for purposes of of setting with the maximum boathouse is, it it helps the public if you at least have a reason for some consistency. The city, why apply for a 600 square feet from the city but then be denied by the Lake Corporation because they regulate that for 500? So you, or vice versa, so it set up.
You've answered my question, I just didn't know who Lake Corp. was, okay?
And we wouldn't necessarily have, you know, revisited this but for the mandate from FEMA and the revisions that were made to the flood management overlay that really caused us to take a look at that and try to maintain some consistency for administrative reasons.
Another quick comment on this. I'm assuming that any boathouse that's already built is grandfathered. If it's above 500, nobody's going to make them, right? Okay, so walking around, driving around the slate, I didn't see too many vacant lots. Okay, so I don't expect too many boathouses to be requesting to be built. Is that a fair statement? It's kind of a, it's a code, but probably won't happen too often.
Well, it actually happens more than you would think. And 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 the boathouses are in a constant need of, you know, maintenance. And and oftentimes, maintenance becomes a request, a building permit, application to remodel or expand or, so they're, yeah. Boathouses are a thing and they will continue to be requests for boathouses and.
Okay, the final comment I'll make was about another one. And it was one of the more humorous things that I've got to kind of chuckle about was about the the building standards and stuff. And you were talking, looked like some pretty old sage architects commented on that. And I thought it was really funny when one said, hey, this is the city that said we want the village look.
And then we built. Yeah, there were some scathing comments from one of the previous. That had a lot to do with, as I think they mentioned in their comments. You know, that was from the 80s and they were talking about different time in the city.
But I think the point that I was making, other than pointing out something that I found particularly funny, but I think the point is is it's really hard to write code about building standards and trying to match up stuff. Sometimes it doesn't work. I mean, you wouldn't have this beautiful functional, what I hear, functional building if you, you know, if it looked like a village. Okay, so, but anyway, it's it's a complicated thing and I don't know if you can solve that problem. But it looked like you've done good work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner friends, that no other questions from the commission, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on then. One one thing before I move on, just I I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to check. So there was no public comments that we received on this, right, Iris? All right, thanks. So next, we'll move on to our next agenda item, other business. Director Siegel, is there any other business you'd like?
Not this evening, thank you.
Item number 10, schedule review. Anything we want to review on schedule?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, your next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, December 13th. And you have scheduled the second of your your two work sessions on the annual goal setting. So we'll be back to talk with you about, there was some follow-up research and some questions that you had. And staff has continued to coordinate with the Palisades Neighborhood Association. Just wanted to make sure you were aware of that as they're continuing, they continue to be interested in looking at an overlay zone. So we're, we'll have more information for you on that at your next meeting. The second item that's scheduled, the second item that's scheduled is a work session on the middle housing, House Bill 2001, a follow-up on on that. So Senior Planner Olson is planning on bringing the first sort of set of, not code concepts, but a list of, I think, suggested approaches or alternatives for addressing what we believe are the the more prescriptive requirements of the bill where there isn't a whole lot of discretion or or options, frankly, for the city. And we wanted to bring those before you so that we could get some direction on, are these items we're prepared to move forward on and begin drafting language for the commission and the public to review? So that's really the purpose of the first work session is to, I think he's triaging the, you know, the requirements of the bill and the recommendations of the committee into different buckets of these, we believe, are more straightforward and more prescriptive. These are the more policy oriented changes. And then, of course, there were other elements that were really beyond the scope of the the bill. But there were recommendations that the committee had brought forward. And I believe the council has said that we are to, with the exception of the demolition recommendation, that the council expressed kind of the preference for having the other optional elements come before you after we've met the deadline, after we've met the requirements of the bill by June 2022. And then perhaps we'd have direction at that point to begin exploring the other the other options. So it's more than a schedule update, but I just want to provide some context for, you know, where we're at and what you can expect to see on the 13th.
Thank you, Director Siegel.
Are we having a meeting on the 27th of December?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Lee. That's a good question. And typically, you know, in the past, the commission has not held that second meeting in December when it fell like during the holidays, which it almost always does. So that's just a question. We don't have any work scheduled for you then. Didn't want to presume that you would want to meet then, but I, you know, we can. If you're, if there's any business that you feel we need to address.
The question is, would we have the second meeting in December, which would be December 27th? Given the holiday, we typically haven't met during those periods of time. So I think the suggestion for the commission would be to follow the precedence and skip that meeting, the second meeting in December. Unless any commissioners disagree or want to give comments.
I would only say for the time being, we leave that as is. And at our meeting on December 13th, we make that decision based on what information have we postponed to a later date? Because we've got a lot coming down the pipeline in 2022, especially the first two quarters.
So, yeah, I can tell you, I'll be out of town on the 27th. But, you know, we would have a substitute, substitute planner.
But based on some of the conversations we have here, we'll we'll be available to do it either telephonically and or via.
There you go. Yeah, nicely played. Yeah. Okay, well, we're happy to, you know, take your direction, of course. And, you know, if you wanted to make that decision on the 13th, we'll plan accordingly.
Commissioners, any feedback on that? That would have been my recommendation, we just to say we we plan on canceling it.
Until December 13th meeting to decide whether or not we discontinue the 27th.
We, it would be helpful for staff to know because we have, you know, administrative support. And if it's a telephone conference, you know, I can coordinate that with my phone, but you may not want to hold a meeting that way.
So based on our upcoming schedule, I guess that I would refer back to what Chair was saying. Based on our upcoming schedule, Director Siegel, what would your recommendation be knowing our workload coming up? And if there is anything postponed from December 13th, that would then add more to the January, February meetings.
Well, your, so your schedule in January and and on from there is is fairly open at this point. And really what we wanted to do on the 13th or what we're going to ask on the 13th is for some direction on next steps with House Bill 2001 primarily, which we're anticipating will begin to fill in your schedule. So that's really driving it, I think, you know, if you, I don't think we're going to have any any work related to HB 2001 to bring to you on the 27th because we really need to check in and get that input on the 13th first. And then, of course, that'll take time to process. So I don't think you're going to slow down the, you know, the the work or or have to forego any any tasks if you don't meet on the 27th.
But we'd definitely recommend, based on what Director Siegel was just communicating to us.
Yeah, all right, thank you. I think we agree we can cancel the meeting on December 27th. Anything else that we have, none?
What's that? Oh, I don't, it's the best time of year.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Phillips, do you have a final comment?
Listen, after listening two hours to the city council meeting on that middle housing, I I don't know how the city staff's going to get it done. I mean, that's an incredible workload that they've they've moved toward this area. And that's fine with me, I'm fine, but you were on it, too. There was a significant two-hour discussion on what's to be done for code as it relates to that. And I'm not trying to open another discussion tonight. I just, there's a lot of homework to be done.
Thank you, so in order, Commissioner Phillips. With that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone, good night.